Today's episode is brought to you by DeSanto Propane. DeSanto Propane is four generations strong as a trustworthy, family-owned business with unmatched customer service. Go online at de santopropane.com for more info or call toll-free at 1-800-752-4574. Since 1937, the difference has been DeSanto Propane. Today, we continue our series previewing local elections across the Finger Lakes by catching up with one of the candidates running for Canadega City Council. Guy Turketti joins me in studio. Guy, thanks so much for being here today.
Thanks for having me, Josh.
So let's start with the easy question, why are you running?
So Canadega was my adopted hometown. I'm from Rochester and I've really, it's my, it's my home. And I've always been interested in politics. I was, I had a poli sci minor in college and I've been on the Canadega Democratic Committee for well over a decade. And I just, I enjoy the process of politics and I also, I want to have a say in how my hometown, how it runs, how decisions are made. And I was the last one to, no, I, I was actually, I was, I was planning on running in 2016. So I'd been kind of making, making plans because Canadega traditionally had a very difficult time finding candidates. And then 2016, someone got elected at a national level where everybody wanted to be involved at a local level. And we went from having to try to find people to having like more candidates than, than we knew what to do with. And one, and it was, it was an at-large, which I wasn't crazy about, someone else. And I said, yeah, take it. And I'm in Ward Two. That's been filled pretty consistently. This year, the person who has it, Dan Unwrath, is not running for election. I said, well, it must, must be my time. And I guess that I really, I enjoy politics. I really like being involved in the decision-making of a community and I hope that.
The timing, the why now then is just, it was purely a matter of timing with Dan stepping away and you feeling like this was the right moment.
If, if you would ask me eight or nine months ago, I would have said, I'm going to wait till I retire. Cause I've got, I've got a couple more years of teaching than I could retire. And then Dan retired and they were looking for someone and, you know, now there, there used to be two-year terms for, for city council, another four. So it was going to be another four years. And I just, yeah, the time was now. I think it was, it just made sense to, to, to jump in feet first.
Ward Two, for those who may not be completely familiar with the city, pretty diverse, pretty interesting, pretty busy. What are you hearing from voters in your ward? What issues are most important to them right now?
Probably if, if anything at all, when most people complain about this complaint is, is the quality of the roads. Which more often than not, some of the roads are not city, like Main Street is, is a state highway. We have nothing to do with, 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 with Main Street. But it's, it's those things that, you know, all politics are local. That's what they're, that's, that's what they're concerned about is, is the roads, is their services. I'll be honest with you, you know, we, I'm hitting a lot of houses. Most of the houses, you know, not most, a lot of houses, it keep up the good work because Canadega has been running pretty smoothly for the last, you know, 10, 12 years. It's, it's, you know, it's a pretty good place to live. It's a pretty good place to do business.
To that end, I think, you know, there's a bunch of different topics and issues that I want to get into with you here. But keeping taxes low is always the goal that candidates will share and they will say, I want to keep taxes low. But the city has a robust set of services that it provides. How do you approach that? What, when you think about a potential term on city council, how would you approach thinking about and, and, you know, having to potentially make difficult decisions down the road?
So I think, I think it, it's a balance. We, we want people to want to move to Canadega and for them to move there has to be attractive. Taxes can't be too high, but also the services have to be adequate, if not better. I've, I've not, I've not served on city council, but I support things like, you know, the, the current city council has fully staffed the police and the fire departments. Those are based from what I, from, you know, as being behind the scenes, those are based on research. Those are based on strictly the numbers. What is it? I know, for example, there's been a hot topic with the fire department. People want more firefighters. And I'm pretty sure maybe three, four, I'm terrible with numbers. A few years ago, there was a, there was a study done and they found, I think the number was, I don't know, 17 or 18 full-time firefighters was appropriate for the city of our size. And that's what we have. So I think making sure that, that, that you meet the needs, but also, you know, try to do it in a fiscal, fiscally responsible way. I know from talking to other cities, talking to city council members recently, that they've just completed a water treatment is kind of really, but they did a water treatment update and part of the, part of the process that city council was involved in is they're going to not only update the water treatment facility, but they're doing it through a certain company that's going to take the waste and turns over into bio solids and sell that waste. So not only will that waste not necessarily be going to the landfill, creating an environmental issue, it's going to be actually being sold to say farmers, probably at lower cost than maybe commercially available fertilizer, which will, which will actually benefit the city by lowering the taxes or at least making it probably close to tax neutral. Because the update, which is a, provides a better service, also has a way to make it less financially burdensome. And I like this, you know, the city council for the last, the last several years have really taken that approach of doing what's best for the, for the, for the citizens, both on a needs base and a wants base. I want to continue that.
Infrastructure in your ward, how do you think it stacks up compared to the rest of the city?
I think for the most part, Ward Two is, is in pretty good shape. There is, there is an issue in, right on, not, on, not in my particular residence, but on, and on Gorham Street, there's a new apartment complex factory at 243 Gorham Street. And even before the factory was there, that Gorham Street section, it's, it's, I don't, I don't know what, it's low. If, if the Senate, the sewers are not, I don't know, I don't know the details. I'm, I'm not privy to those. But I do know that the last major floods that devastated people in wards four also did a lot of damage in the, in the, in the factory, like first floor apartments where there was not just water, but, but sewage coming in. And it, you know, and like the, like the, like, not my ward, but Ward Three, it's part of my city. I'm, I'm very, I want to be part of a solution to, to that, to those weather-related incidences. And it's can't be, can't be just the city. It's got to be city. You know, the, the main, the main conduit for, for wastewater, for not wastewater, for, for stormwater is Sucker Brook. Sucker Brook starts, well, Sucker Brook goes through Ontario County, through the town, and then into the city before it reaches Canadega Lake. So the city only has so, so much it can do. And I know in the past they've, they've done, they've worked with the county and the town. We need to keep doing that. We need, we need to find a cooperative solution. Cause if you believe the scientists, weather-related issues are not getting better. So I think that's, again, Ward Two, that, that severe flooding, it's got to be figured out because those poor people were, it wasn't just water coming into their apartments.
And that's something that could potentially be very expensive for a community of, of Canadega's size, if you're looking at the entire city as a whole.
Which is why I really, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the city council did, I think they did a really good job of, of reaching out and trying to get money from, from, from the state to deal with the flooding issues because I have several friends on Wes Gibson where the, most of the main flooding was. I was over there helping people, bringing, you know, helping my truck, bringing, helping give them sandbags and water was five feet in some people's basements. It was above their, their electrical circuit boxes. And the state originally was like, well, you have to meet these, you know, 70,000 requirements. And finally we, they got them to loosen up and give people money because they, they couldn't, they couldn't have their electric turned on until an electrician came and certified that they had the power. And that took three, four, or five days, which meant the stuff, the basement was just full of water for that. It was, it was a mess. And I think that illustrates that, that it can't be just a city solution when it impacts such a big area.
Yeah, fair, completely. When I say economic development, what does that look like in your ward?
Well, like I mentioned, the, the factory, that, that housing is, is, I think it's, it's an incredible addition to, to Ward Two, to the city. That was, it was the Lisk factory. And we, when we, my wife and I bought our house in 1995, which was a couple of years ago.
Just a couple.
We were told, we live on Gorham and across from us is, is empty field. And there's a warehouse and there's the whole Lisk property, which was, which was virtually empty. We were told in 95 that, oh, that's all going to be developed in five, five years, 10 years, it'll all be, well, list, the factory 243 just opened up maybe two or three years ago. That's not, wasn't five or 10 years. But it, the phase one was built. It's full. There's a waiting list. They, the developer came back, I don't know, maybe three months ago. They were approved for phase two, which if there's a waiting list for phase one, I'm assuming that waiting list will shift to phase two and there'll be another list for that. We have, we have, we have Main Street. We have the eastern side of the Main Street Business District. There are, you know, there's always stores opening and closing, but I think for the most part, it's pretty vibrant. We've had a few new things open up and I'm not sure if it's opened up yet, but I know planning commission approved a market on Phoenix Street. It was the previous owner of Tide by Night. And he opened up, it's like a, like a world food market. I can't wait to get down there. You know, and I think development, Ward Two has probably the biggest stretch of public beach, public access to Canadega Lake. There's a, there's a big, big plot of land on, on the lake that sits empty because of developer of Pinnacle North. I don't, it's a big, 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 huge plot of land. I know the city is doing a lot of reaching out to certain agencies, individuals to try to get something there to improve the lakefront because it's kind of embarrassing when you have, when you have, you know, Canadega Lake and there's this big empty land. And not for nothing, you know, people, one thing I do hear sometimes, you ask what people, you know, well, how come, how come Canadega was given all this money away to, to these developers? And I always tell them, city council, as far back as you can think, have not, you know, approved, that's not the city. That's the county. That's, that's the development agency that, that are creating pilots for, you know, payment in lieu of taxes. The, the city council, mostly, mostly of which has been Democrats for the last few years, has not been in favor of those giveaways. And so, yeah, you have to attract business, but you have, you have to make business, if you're going to attract it, it should benefit the citizens and not just the developers. So if you bring in, if you bring in a, a company, it's got to be, it's got to make sense for the company and, and it's, again, it's a fine balance, but.
I'm curious because I see this line of logic sometimes on social media, which maybe that makes it something I shouldn't even mention. I see this line, maybe it's time for the city to start to look away from the lake for development. Do you think it's getting to the point now where, I mean, Canadega, the, the lakefront portion of the city of Canadega is pretty well-developed in the grand scheme of things? I'm curious if you feel like it's reaching a point where maybe it's time to start shift focus away a little bit and start to develop the inland portions of the city?
Oh, absolutely. The city, you know, it's, it's the crown jewel of Canadega. I mean, the, the lake is the crown jewel of, of Canadega, obviously. It's what brings in, that's why I moved to Canadega. But when, when my wife got hired at Seneca Falls, I, we were living in Rochester. We had, and I was still working in Rochester. We had to find a place that we could, you know, split the difference. And I remember when I was a kid, I used to come to Roseland, water park. I mean, not, not the, not the, not the splash park. There was amusement park here. It was phenomenal. I said, you know what? Let's, let's take a look at Canadega. I remember that being a really pretty, pretty city. And we moved here in 91. And I would, I wouldn't, we had chances to move other places. I, I don't, I've chosen to stay there. But, but so that it's important for like, but you're right, we can't survive just on the lake alone. Now, I'm not an expert with economic development. I'll be, I'm not, I'm not going to lie. You want to talk about that, you can talk to Mike Mills. He's, he's got way more experience with that than I do. But I think it's important to try to attract development that, again, that is beneficial not only to financially to the area, but, but also it, it will help attract people to want to live there. Cause you can build a factory in, in Canadega, but if you don't, if you don't have the, if you don't have the, if it's not an attractive place to live, people who work there will live in Victor, they'll live in Bloomfield, they'll, they'll live other places. It's got to be a, a place that, that increases the, the, the quality of life, not just the financial. I mean, nobody wants to pay more taxes. I understand that. But, but we don't, we don't want it to be a burden either.
When we talk about housing, whether it's median housing stock, rent prices, senior housing availability, all three of those are major issues. What would you like to see the city do to address them? And how would you like to see the city work with the county since it has now begun its process of now moving forward with the study that was conducted and showed some pretty troubling numbers?
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the Canadega City Planning Commission. And so we're dealing with some of those issues. The short-term rental issue, most recently dealing with, you know, the issue is housing stock. And that we talked about before, 50% of, of, of the resident, of the residential housing stock in Canadega is rentals. It's a big number. You know, I'll be, it shocked me when I, I didn't think it was anywhere near that high.
Heard it for the first time earlier today and it literally floored me.
It's crazy. Now, that, you know, that, that it's a big number, but it also could be that maybe people are, are, are living in Canadega and working elsewhere. Maybe it's become more of a bedroom community. You know, that's, if people are renting, it means, it means they're probably working nearby. So that's, it's not necessarily, I don't think it's a, it's a huge problem, but there is definitely a need for more housing stock for, for middle-income people. We have, we have, there's lots of neighborhoods in Canadega that are beautiful and there may be, you know, middle, upper-class to upper-class. There's lots of older homes that maybe are lower-middle class. But there's not a lot of that middle ground where, where maybe a, a starter home for, for young family to buy. That's what we need. We need affordable housing for the, for that group, that big group in the middle. I'm not saying they're being ignored, but let's be honest, developers want to make money and they make money by selling high-end property. I get that. It's not, it's not a secret, but there's got to be a way to attract developers to build some of those middle, middle-income properties. And there are some, we've had some, some developments. There's been a couple come before planning commission. There's a couple of, of parcels, actually in Michael Mills in Ward One that, that are, that have been, people have come forward and it just hasn't worked out. But that will be developed. But as, as planning commission, we've tried to, you know, as, as best we can, make sure that those, those, those properties stay within nature of, of Canadega, trying to bring in single-family homes that look, you know, that look like neighborhoods, not, not, um, developments.
Right.
And it's important.
How much of a challenge is that in a city? Because I've talked to a bunch of, a bunch of folks running for city council in Geneva and now Canadega as well. And while I've talked to plenty of supervisors who, you know, represent more rural communities, you know, they've got land left and right, ready to, ready to fire, ready to go. But it seems like in the cities, it's a far more challenging task to come up with the space to potentially plant some of this future housing. How do you think, given the, your background on the planning committee, how do you think that, how do you think that even gets approached?
Well, I hate to, you know, harp on it, but that factory at 243 was, was it, was in a band, basically an abandoned factory that they, they, they repurposed. And I've been in those, those apartments are beautiful. And I wouldn't call them low-income, but they're not, they're not, they're, they're affordable. They're affordable.
Middle of the road.
Middle of the road, middle housing. There, there's another property in Canadega on, on the other side of Main Street. It's an old, basically factory. And the problem with that is there's, there's abatement issues, but they've been working on that for, for years over by the, by, by City Hall. There, there are, there are places in Canadega, the old Tom's Mobile. It's, it's the old Tom's Mobile on the corner of Main and Sol and Sol. That's going to be turned into, I think it's, I think it's, if I remember correctly, it's, it's been a while. We approved it. I'm pretty sure it's mostly commercial, but it's development in redevelopment of, of, of an existing place that wasn't being utilized. There, there are, there are pockets. You're right. It's, it's, there's not going to be an influx of, you know, apartment complexes in Canadega, in the city proper. The town there, there, there's, they have plenty of land. But I think, I think the developers who come in to repurpose what, what Pinnacle North, that was, that was kind of unused. There was, there was some empty, empty op buildings and, and they, they took their land and they redeveloped it. And they turned it into housing where there wasn't housing before. So taking what is there and renovating it, repurposing it, it, you know, it's, it cleans up eyesores and it provides, it provides much-needed housing stock. So that, that's kind of, except for those two parcels in Ward One, that's kind of the only way we're going to get some, some new developments.
Last month, it was probably the middle of last month when we saw the report that forecast a 40% increase in seniors living in the Finger Lakes by 2040. All of the other age groups that fall below that 65-plus category forecasted to drop by seven to 14%. When you think of that fact and you think about a city like Canadega, better positioned than most, I would say, in the region, but still has to be front of mind. What makes you concerned about operational success for the city of Canadega over the next 10 to 15 years? And is that something that city council really should start thinking about tomorrow or maybe yesterday?
Well, you know, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that statistic and I'm not a council. I wouldn't be surprised if they aren't already, if they aren't already at least aware of that. Excuse me. We have, we have the hospital. We have two or three retirement facilities in the area. But if, if, if 40%, that's, that's a big number of seniors. If they haven't already started planning, yeah, that's something that we're, hopefully we will have to worry about because that, that's, it's a different, it's a different brand of services. Seniors require, you might, you might need more medical transport. You might need more access to, to doctors and, and, and that. That maybe we don't have as much, although with, with, with you of our in Canadega, we have, we do have plenty. But it's also troubling that, that the, the, everybody younger than 65 is, is decreasing. That's, that's, then that, I don't, I don't know if there's a right answer to that. There are multiple things we could try. We talked about before about trying to attract or develop more business that will attract workers. Workers generally are younger than 65. So if you can attract business, we'll get people under 65. I, and I'm not, Canadega, can, not only is it kind of a vacation town, it's also, it's a retirement town. So the number of people older than 65 going up doesn't surprise me much. I was just campaigning, what's today? Was it Monday? And we went to a couple, one of, Dr. Steve Hume is on council. He walked us around his neighborhood down in Roseland. And probably some of the more expensive houses, townhouses in, in Canadega. And they're all, they're all, these people are, some people, he's like, well, that house there, they're down in, in Georgia. They're, they're going to, they're gone. So people move to Canadega who are older, but they move there as a retirement. And I think sometimes that, that they come with, with, with maybe a little, a little more money, a little more disposable than not paying for, for daycare or college. Maybe they're close to paying for more medical care. But, but they, but the, having, having more seniors, I don't think is, is a problem. Having a lot less everybody else might be a problem long-term. And I guess, and I'm pretty sure that city council is aware of those, those trends. And if I'm, if I'm, you know, fortunate enough to be elected, I would, I would definitely think that would be. And I don't know what city council can do immediately, but, but definitely putting in places, putting in place processes and programs that will, that will hopefully reverse that trend or slow it at least.
Whether we're talking about landfills, HABs, invasive species, tourism, or economic development, it all touch, they all touch Canadega Lake for you guys. When you think about the environmental issues that the region as a whole faces, what role do you want to see city council take moving forward with some of these, especially with some, like landfills? You don't have a landfill in Canadega. But obviously the landfill issue is very much an important one for everybody in the region, not just people in Seneca Falls or people in Hopewell where the, or Seneca, where the, the landfill is there. So how do you philosophically approach that? And what would you like to see city council do in terms of how it approaches these issues?
So as you, as you well know, being from Seneca Falls, we have that same issue here. Canadega, and I forget, again, I'm terrible with numbers, but I think it was a couple of years ago, they had voted that the landfill in Seneca was scheduled to be closed by 2027, I think was the date. It did, there was a date certain when it's supposed to be.
2028.
That was close. Now, that same thing happened in Seneca Falls and then politics switched and now that's, that's maybe up in the air. So I would, I would like to be part of the conversation at least to try to make sure that if that was decided, that it happens. The, the problem with that, and I think it's, it's important not only for, for the environment, I think it's, it's a health issue. I, I think, I think putting tons and tons of garbage in the same spot can't possibly be good for the people nearby. Can't possibly be good for the water table. It can't possibly be good for the air quality. I'm not a scientist, but it just doesn't, it strikes me that that much garbage in one location can't be good for, for people in the area. I also, and so there's that. I, I fully support the closing of the landfill. The problem with that is, probably was your next question, the landfill also provides, pays a lot of tax money to the county and therefore to the city. That's something that we have, if it's 2028, we have five, five years to come up with a way to, to, to reduce the, the tax implication. The wastewater treatment update does that. We will be sending less waste to the landfill. We'll be, we'll be increasing, actually getting income from the waste we produce because it'll be usable by other entities. Things like that are things we need to be looking at now. So we're not caught short in 2028. I also think that, that it's not just a landfill. I think the lake, I think runoff from farms. We have, we have the, the, the algal blooms every, every summer. And a lot of that is, is not from, it's from rising temperatures. And it's also from, from farm runoff. And it's something we have to look at. And again, it's not, not a city issue, except that it is because the lake is in the city. Kershaw Park is, is a city, is a city park. That the sole reason people go there is because of the lake. And for, for days every summer, Kershaw is closed because of, because of the algae. And so we have to figure out a way, if, if, if that, if that keeps getting worse, well, then why, why would people come to Canadega to vacation if they, one of the, one of the attractions is the lake and they can't use it because of algae? Then we have to figure out a way that to solve that without negatively impacting the farmers because they're important too. They have, they're a crucial part of, of our socioeconomic system. They produce a lot of, a lot of economic value, but they're also, they, they provide, you know, food. You can't go to, you know, you go to Wegmans and I love Wegmans. They'll tell you what farm produced, where the corn came from, where the, it's fantastic. It's local. I think it's great. I support that. But we have to figure out a way to support the farmers without destroying one of the, one of the main attractions to Canadega. And again, using creative, cooperative discussions with, with, between the city, the town, the county and the state if it comes to it.
How much of that involves putting, having city council be ready to put some pressure on the state if need be? Because with a lot of these environmental issues, the city of Geneva or the city of Canadega or the town of whatever can have the best of intentions, but largely are at the mercy of what the state decides or how the state proceeds with a lot of these issues. Are you ready to potentially have to go that route with city council? If some of those environmental issues persist and the state does not seem to be like an active participant in trying to help Canadega, save Canadega Lake?
Yeah, we, we have to, not, not to bring politics in, but, but Canadega and Geneva, our state representatives tend not to be really wholeheartedly behind environmentally conscious policymaking. So, and it's not, I'm not, I'm not generalizing, but in general, why I'm generalizing. The representatives tend not to be supportive of, of those kinds of propositions. And so therefore the city will, has to be the voice because we don't have a voice from a state representative in the, in Albany, making those cases. The city did, I think they did a phenomenal job reaching out to the state with the flooding. They were, they were, they were the advocates. They were the ones who. They were, they were, they were the advocates, they were the ones who got, and, and to be, to be fair, the state, the state representatives did come through in that case. They, they, they were hugely important in helping get, get the money for the flood victims. Environmentally, I'm not sure they, they, we would have the same level of support. So in that case, and again, I think, I think, again, taking politics out of it, it's, it's a local issue, it's not a red and blue issue, it's, it's, it's a Canadega city, town, Ontario County issue and the, the city and the town and the county have to come together and put aside some of those differences for, for the benefit of, of everybody. You know, I've talked, I talked to people on the campaign, I'm campaigning and I'll get someone who, oh, well, I'm, I'm a Republican. And I said, well, if I get elected, you'll be my concierge, just like the Democrats. I'm not, I'm not running just to serve Democrats, I'm running to serve everybody. And we all, we, you know, we all have the same problems and we may disagree on the solutions, but we have to agree that we have the same problems. And I think the city and the state and the county and the town, we have to be working in the same direction or this is, it's, it's, it's going to be a much slower, less productive process if, if we're not working together on this.
Last question for you, where can folks learn more about your campaign?
So I have a Facebook page, Turketti for, Turketti for Ward Two on Facebook, turkettyforwardtwo@gmail.com is my email address. You know, if, if, if you see this and you live in Ward Two, please reach out to me, I'll come, we'll talk. I, every time I visit a house, I, I tell them, here's my contact information, please reach out, I'm willing to anybody. I've stopped, we, you know, we, we stopped at a house a couple of weeks ago where the, where the gentleman, he goes, oh, you're, you're my wife because I'm a Republican. I said, well, again, we ended up talking for about 10 minutes and at the end of it, he invited me in for, for some bourbon. I said, I'll tell you what, November 8th, I may take you up on that. But yeah, that's, that's how you get ahold of me.
Okay. That'll do it for this edition of FLX Today. If you'd like to hear more conversations like this one, check out the show on your favorite podcast platform or subscribe to the fingerlakesone.com YouTube channel. Have a great day and we will see you next time.